Anne, can you hear us?
Oh, I can now.
Okay, awesome. No, we were all just sitting in silence.
Oh.
A minute.
Okay.
All right, cool. Anybody else that we need to wait on? I know that Howard said he may not be able to make it, so. We can go ahead and get started. So, November 23rd, and we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order at 4:04 PM. Can I get a roll call of planning commission members present, please? No particular order.
Bryce Erlich here.
Erin Palin here.
Lupe Obaladiya here.
Sorry, Abby Dahman here.
Great, Heather Lynn here. County Commissioners present? Do we have any? I don't see anybody on here. Okay, do we have any changes or additions to the agenda, Anne?
No, no.
We don't have any minutes. Next, the staff updates on the Angel View preliminary plan.
So I think I mentioned at the last meeting that we do have their preliminary plan. It is, I've finished the review, the completeness review. It is lacking a few items that Paul and I will review and respond back to the applicant. So I do imagine that we're probably maybe a week to 10 days out from being able to get it out and online to everyone for review. But we actually, we probably have enough to give everybody first look at it, knowing that there is some additional information that should be coming. It's kind of nice to wait till it's complete to send it out, so you don't get confused with all the different revisions. But, but we're fairly close, so I do think that it'll be one of our bigger hearings scheduled for the first of the year. And then I'm hoping that we will get some movement in the RFP for the airport. So what that is for new members that's joining the discussion is that Lake County owns a gravel pit located near the airport, that there has been some interest in leasing to a third party. And so we've been working, a group of us, on putting together the RFP to put out for bid to a, to that industry. And there will need to be a conditional use permit performed onsite to allow for mining operations. So we did some historic look at this, this pit, and it did have some land use review, but that review had decided that a conditional use permit would not be necessary. However, new, today's code does require it. So we will be, and, and the county will be the applicant on that. Staff will be preparing that conditional use permit and bringing it forward for everyone to take a look at. And then also, just to let everyone know, we've got, there's been several different changes to the zoning map that hasn't historically been noted. Most recently, we did a rezone of a small dual-zoned parcel, the Lundine property. From, it was dual-zoned urban residential and industrial mining. And that re, the rezone is not present on the zoning map, but Paul and I have had occasion to find several changes in zoning that haven't been noted. So we will be working on some updates on the zoning map. And so just wanted to just kind of give everyone a heads up on some other peripheral stuff that staff's working on, or if you have any questions about any of those things.
Any questions for staff? Okay. We will move on to the back country zone district. Anne sent out a table of use, or use table for review for us to kind of discuss what's, what would be good to go within, you know, the back country, or what kind of uses would be that country district? And actually, before I do this, I noticed that Kristy Glars is on here. And Kristy, I know that we did the, we kind of had your housing update last week, and then wasn't sure if you had anything you were here on that matter for, or if you were just kind of tuning in?
Yeah, I thought I'd just pop in in case anybody had any questions, since I wasn't able to attend last week. Thank you for recognizing I was here.
Yeah, no problem. Did anybody have any questions? When we went through it at the meeting, it seemed like everybody kind of had a good taste. I explained that most of the policy currently that we're looking at prioritizing was in the city, in that we would be turning our focus back on the county a little bit further down the road.
Thank you, Heather, for taking that explanation. I felt like it wasn't very clear when I was writing it, so I'm glad that you were able to explain it.
Yeah, for sure. All right, anybody have any other questions for Kristy? Okay. Well, thanks for popping in. You're welcome to stay, of course, but we appreciate you. Okay, we have, back to, so we have the table of uses. I will go ahead, I do have that use table here, so that we can kind of look at it. Anne, what was your thoughts as far as how you'd like to go about this? I was kind of thinking we'd pull it up and just go page by page and see if anybody had any, any discussion points on each page?
I think that's great, Heather. I did kind of, in the, the new draft, I kind of added some items in bold of, you know, things that were considered in both zone districts, you know, the, so the two affected districts really are recreational and ag forestry. And so, you know, there were uses that were kind of resonated with those zone districts that I questioned whether or not maybe they would make sense in, in this zone district. So yeah, I think just kind of going through, kind of pulling out some of the ones that, that staff would kind of like, you know, your thoughts on. That would be great. I think that sounds like a great way.
And so did you want it, was it in the code document or the table separate?
It was in, it was in the code, the new draft.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just have so many windows open right now.
Thank you for navigating that. So yeah, it's down just underneath the intent statement. There we go. So uses by right, there were two that would have been uses by right, and yeah, in both the ag forestry and the recreational. And, and those two that were uses by right that, that were consistent in the underlying zone districts that these both came from would be utility service facilities underground. Some of these, these, these infrastructure pieces, I think those were kind of a no-brainer. You know, if, if these areas would be considered for them, they may not be given their location, but if they were, then I, you know, I think that there's a reasonableness about allowing them. But, you know, again, they may not widely be ever utilized, but in the event they would be. So utility service facilities underground, and then large animal ownership were the two that, that first popped out. And both of them, to me, seem a little benign and, and kind of reasonable. But I would love to think if, if anybody has any reasons for thinking that perhaps there's an argument on the other side for them not being a use by right. Maybe more over the large animal ownership than really the utility service facilities. And I can, I can throw out a kind of a what-if kind of thing, like large animal ownership would, you know, are these areas conducive for large animal ownership? You know, are, are these rural remote parcels, are they of a nature that is consistent with a good environment for large animal ownership? So I think that, you know, it's, it's about whether they're in a good choice for habitation by large animals, as well as whether or not that use would have any kind of detrimental impact.
So I could, just offhand, I mean, I could see people, I, I don't think this is something that comes up very often, but I could certainly see, especially with all of our newer borough ownership happening around here, and then also with horses where people are choosing that as their transportation to get up to some of these parcels, to be able to stay in their cabin overnight and, you know, whatever that looks like. So I think, you know, I can't imagine anybody's gonna, gonna want to do, as far as trying to pull a horse trailer or whatever, you know, containment up there to, to make it a full-on, full-fledged situation. But I could certainly see where maybe somebody wants to have, you know, a containment area for when they use their horses to get up to these parcels, or, or donkeys, or whatever it be. So I guess that would, my initial inclination would be that I don't see much harm with it. What are other people's thoughts?
I mean, it's kind of part and parcel with how people want to use their back country parcels, right? By their nature, I think people will just be leaving each other alone up there, so I don't know. Given the seasonal access and access issues in general, if it's really that big of a concern for large animal ownership to get out of hand to the point where it'd be a problem for anyone else.
Well, and to that note, a reminder also that unless somebody has 35-plus acres, they can't have a domestic well to water larger animals. Doesn't mean people don't do that, but that at least is another regulation out there as far as getting out of hand. You know, I think that it, it would have to be some, something of sorts that it really is just used on this very temporary basis.
Good point. Also, the use specific standard associated with large animal ownership is that you can only have one per half acre, but that can be quite a few when, you know, and most of these are probably five acres and greater. So, but, but that's what the use specific standard is for large animal ownership.
Hi, guys. This is Kevin Pecorni, and I actually have property up there. And I would, I mean, I have 20 acres up there, so I would eventually like to have a borough up there. Of course, I'm not gonna get 30 of them, but one or two at one point is something that's always been on my mind.
Thank you.
Would you agree that the logistical concerns alone would kind of prevent you from taking advantage of this? I just can't see someone supporting 20 animals out in this district, even if they theoretically can with the land they have.
I just got sent this draft, like, right before, I wasn't even expecting to come to this meeting. Someone shared it with me, so I haven't even read the draft yet. So I can't really, can't really answer that.
I think the, I think the other piece that we can fall back on with the water is pretty key. Somebody would have to be showing that they are bringing water in to take care of 20 donkeys. So I don't, I feel like that is, you know, if, if we ended up with somebody who's causing a problem with 10 or 20 horses or large animals up there, they're gonna have to demonstrate to the state, as well as to us, that they've got water, that, an outside water source that they're bringing.
I'd like to interject here that a significant portion of this land that we're changing to back country is AF. Is that right, Anne?
AF and recreational.
Large animal ownership is absolutely a use by right in the AF zone district.
Right.
And, and I think that there are particularly west of Beaver Lakes, up Empire Gulch, is a large area of winter, of summertime grazing. That, God, who's, who's the major landowner, Heather, here in Lake County in that area? Around the wildlife area?
The Moyer family.
Moyer, the Moyer, yeah, the Moyer family does do a lot of summer grazing on significant portions of this land area that I think that we are changing to back country. And I think, I, I don't want to try to explain to Bill Moyer that he can't do that anymore.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. I think having this little, this use table up is gonna help us because we'll be able to see a little bit of what's currently allowed in the AF and the RC zone districts, and what we want to continue to allow. So, Anne, if it's okay, I'm gonna backtrack a little bit on what we were looking at on your form and maybe just go through this first page quickly as to what's currently allowed in those zone districts and whether or not we feel like that transfers to back country. Because I think it is important that people understand what uses are being taken away from them and what uses are potentially being added. And so that we all have a clear understanding of that as well. So currently in AF and, oh, not in RC, AF is a caretaker residential unit. I guess Anne's probably more clear on what the use specific standard is for that. You know, it's just residential unit, but then it seems like that would be okay. But it's falling under what we're already calling a single-family detached or back country structure, right?
Yeah, single-family dwelling is, is down below. So caretaker residential unit is usually subordinate to a different use.
Okay, so not an accessory dwelling unit, but it's caretaker. It's like a version of that almost.
Specifically allowed in the industrial mining, you know, for mining operation caretaker, as you'll see, it's a use by right. It's not allowed in, in recreational. It is currently in the ag forestry, but again, I don't think caretaker residential unit kind of fits the intent. So, you know, we're kind of just talking about very isolating it to property owner use and, and expanding the residential nature beyond one dwelling unit. Or, you know, having multiple commercial use, so.
Okay, and I think we've all, and please, anybody speak up if, if I skip over something that you want to discuss, but I think we've all talked about no, no more than one dwelling unit. So no duplexes, no two-family units. So that would be one use that goes away. No manufactured housing, either single-family, or, I'm sorry, single-wide or double-wide. The next section that would have a couple in there is the single-family dwelling, which we will have, and we'll have some use specific standards for that. We would have no accessory dwelling units allowed up there, and no other household units. Camping, we would have allowed, so no change there. A college is a conditional use permit in AF, but I don't think that anybody intends on allowing a college to go up there, so we can probably scratch that from the back country. This lodges was part of membership clubs and lodges. Obviously, this would be like the Elks Lodge or the Eagles Lodge, and we aren't allowing that. A community activity building, no, no other community service buildings, no daycare services, no cemetery, no golf course, parks and playgrounds. Gosh, it just seems like this is a really big definition, right? I mean, if somebody wants to have some sort of open space usable park, I guess, I don't know. I don't know what that looks like. Does anybody have any thoughts on parks? I mean, I don't know about a playground either, but.
I think it kind of opens the door to kind of the same impacts of a commercial use. When it's, when it's dedicating a park to, or dedicating a parcel to a playground or a park, you know, it's, it's dedicating it to public use and public impact, so then you have access, you have increased safety. You know, the reason that I haven't, you know, contemplated that perhaps is because it, it tends to have, in my mind, the same correlation to, to a commercial use based on use and traffic and accessibility and need for emergency response.
Yeah, I think a park and a playground is more of an, of an urban kind of use than a, than a rural and remote kind of use. And these areas that we chose basically are rural and remote. I don't think that there's any paved road to any of them.
Yeah, sure, that makes sense totally.
So I would probably say no.
Leave it pro, okay. The, I did mark on mine a question about these water diversions. Because I just know that some of our water diversions exist kind of up in the higher sections of the county, so I don't know if that's something that we need to have in here as conditional.
I think we should. Because you're right, the, those kinds of, those are the kinds of places where those things actually happen.
Yeah, I think they kind of fall into the, you know, infrastructure kind of idea of, you know, anything that's, that's relative to whatever area they may fall in. Then I, I don't see, you know, keeping consistent with the AF and the RC would probably make good sense. Again, they're conditional, so, you know, they would be vetted uses.
Yeah.
That infrastructure already exists up there, so I mean, we would have to be explicitly grandfathering it in if we didn't allow it conditionally, right?
Right, yeah, creating a non-conforming. No, I, yeah, that's a great point. Um, okay, religious assemblies, no, safety services, schools. And then we get to those utility service facilities. Obviously, I think we have to, and, and I guess probably keep them the same, that if they're huge, well, I guess the solar, I don't know what constitutes a small solar energy system, but it seems like we'd want to keep it somewhat consistent here as far as underground allowed, but the others would be conditional. Unless, like, I assume solar energy system, small and isn't like individually used, this is like servicing five houses or something?
I, I think so. Five, 5.2.20, I think, does actually discern between the large and the small.
Sure.
Yes.
I just don't know what it is.
Okay.
You know, taking all those, those out, that you just, like, all of the schools, religious assembly, you know, if we do restrict it so that those things are not allowed uses, we can entertain an application that somebody wants to put it back in.
Right.
We've done that a couple of times.
That's how we, you know, we even created Outfittering Guide, is because there had been a use that had been used that was a real stretch. And so, you know, if, if somebody comes and, and, and like greenhouse, commercial greenhouse, you know, we rethought of that. We rethought that and added use standards for the community garden within the urban residential zone districts. So, you know, sometimes a good argument can come in with some good parameters of, okay, if this, this use was established back in the back country zone, this would be a great time to have a discussion and, and figure out, you know, A, if it's reasonable, and if so, what kind of standards would have to be in place for it to be. So even though we may prohibit something right now in the early creations, which might be a little more prudent, to be a little more conservative, it doesn't completely ever shut the door on it 100%. You know, somebody could come in down the road and make a really good case for why, with certain standards, we could consider it. So, you know, it won't forevermore, immediate, you know, immediately it's not an allowable use, but there could be further discussion.
At a later time.
Sure.
I, I, I agree with that. And it's like when you go down to commercial entertainment event, indoor facility, outdoor facility. I don't think, given our back country intent, our, our purpose statement here includes being able to have, like, a, an outdoor entertainment event, major entertainment event. It's too, generally, almost that land is environmentally sensitive.
Yep. So I assume we'll take that, that out of the, that, and then
Parking.
Commercial parking, we wouldn't need. Group camps and vacation lodges, though, I think we want to keep that, right, as the conditional use. We talked about that. That would be similar to the huts that are up there right now.
Yeah.
And RV parks and campgrounds. The, I don't know what you, I forgot what you had on this, Anne, but it seems like I could see the potential for first people who want to be camping, right, that campgrounds should be up there, but there's really, it would be really difficult for them to get services for that. Well, I guess you don't have to have services. I don't know.
Well, they, so the use specific standards for RV parks and campground requires centralized sanitation and the ability to have water. So, you know, I think that the standards associated at 5.2.17, it's pretty onerous to put in an RV campground, even if you're not going to have hookup units for RVs. Even campgrounds are designed to provide a means of sanitation and water for all of the sites. So I think that, again, it seems to bump it into that commercialized situation.
So. Yeah, and I could, I mean, we don't want, well, I don't know. I was just gonna say, like, I think the idea is not to put a whole bunch of people on one parcel, even if it's a bigger parcel, with campfires and all that kind of thing. I guess that would all be. I guess that would all be vetted through a conditional use. What are other people's thoughts on campgrounds?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it meets the, like, intent of not having commercial uses. Um. If we include that.
I like Abby, um, I like your response, Abby. I think that that's absolutely right, that an RV park and a campground that um are pretty much of the same ilk is, is a commercial use. Well, it's even under the commercial use list. I'd probably say that as we go through this list, commercial uses, we're gonna probably want to take out most of them.
But aren't they of the same ilk as group camps and vacation lodges? I mean, it's all.
No.
If it's, has a separate, so can you explain the difference of why they would be totally separate?
Absolutely, a group camp and vacation lodge is, is more designed to, you know, have um less uh density. Um, and they are more designed to be like, like the huts, um, the 10th Mountain Huts. They're a lot of times um a back country, they fit well within this um structure that, that may have the ability to, to be rented out. But the density, I think, is the biggest um difference between the two. Um, there's some quantifiers of how much density you can have per acre that keeps it considerably less than an RV park and campground. Um, and also, um, I think the, the exposure um to the environment is a little bit different within a um structure versus RVs and, and campgrounds and the discharge of, of different things, campfires and um, you know, different impacts. So I think that the uses is, is different within um the way in which, you know, they are administered um onsite.
Yeah, there's two different use specific standards um for those two things. They actually are pretty different. Um, and like the 10th Mountain Huts, um, their purpose isn't commercial, but it's sort of by necessity has to be commercial. And that's, I think, the main difference between a group camp and an RV park is the RV park is, the purpose is for commercial uses. Um. But the group camp, I think, is, is the purpose isn't to make money.
I, I disagree with that. I mean, I think we have, you know, it's not just the 10th Mountain Division. And I think honestly, allowing sixteen to thirty-two new people in every single night. Um, it's, I understand that it's a nonprofit in organization, but I think just in, intent and purpose, it's pretty commercial. I mean, that's a lot of traffic. And then you also have the backcountry yurts and the Western Pass Hut, which are not under the 10th Mountain nonprofit system, um, which are, you know, commercial uses as well. And so I'm just saying, what's the difference between having a thirty-two bed hut? And if someone has a thirty-five acre parcel, if they want to say, I have a five, five campsites, um, I take care of all the sanitation and water, I provide water for them. This is a wilderness retreat, a, it's meant to be rustic, it's meant to be outdoors. Um, I, I have a problem separating those two as like completely separate entities when it seems like.
I think, Bryce, what, what you're proposing, um, you know, if it's not specifically RV spots or a campground where you're providing campsites, then could be covered in group camps and RV lodges. So I think one, it's a little bit of a density issue and one has more of a residential structure aspect to it. The other has very um temporary lodging or campsite specifically and RV hookup specifically. Wherever, where the other is designed to be more of a structure with residential type setting. And so I don't think that you're precluding um, you know, different types of dwelling units, yurts and, and, you know, those are all backcountry builds. And so, again, these are conditional. Um, and so you would vet, you know, they would, they would come in seeking a conditional use permit that then has to abide by those standards and be properly vetted um for code complacency. But um RV parks and campgrounds have, you know, a different setup and structure. They may serve um similar desires of, of um setting, but, but they do have um different, I think, very distinct differences between the two.
I don't think I have a problem with both in as, as conditional uses. We can, we can vet that out during the conditional use process.
I mean, especially if you say it's a super onerous set of conditions. Um, you know, I understand all the, have to submit a conditional use permit and go through that whole process. And I feel like that would weed out a lot of things that aren't appropriate. But to specifically exclude it, I feel like we're opening up people to try to just work, you know, try to read between the lines, try to find somewhere where anything they want that could have been under the campground rule, they're, they're gonna try to find some way to sneak it into the group camp rule.
Does anybody have any trouble with leaving those both in as conditional uses?
No, I don't, and I don't disagree with, with that at all, actually. Because I, I, i- in some ways, I wish RV parks was its own. Because I feel like in my head, an RV park is this like concrete parking lot with picnic tables and hookups.
And rough access too, right?
Yeah, yeah. You know, in ver- versus like, and some campgrounds look like that too, but a lot of campgrounds don't. Especially if it's like, this is just tent sites. Then I could see if somebody was coming up to us and saying, hey, we're not even putting yurts up. We are less impactful than putting a whole bunch of yurts up. And instead, what we do is we offer these tent sites for through backpackers. And there happens to be like um some tables and I don't know. But I just, I could see this, I, I, I can understand where Bryce is coming from as far as. I think that campgrounds can be somewhat much more basic. And I have a hard time because I feel like RV parks is where the like confusion or the, the problem comes in. But I, but I agree that I'm also not at all worried about somebody trying to put an RV park up in the backcountry district.
Right.
So I guess I feel like I would rather just leave them both, can, leave that both conditional.
The only thing that, that I would continue to, um, and maybe it'd be great to pull those conditions up if, if, you know, if you want to continue to kind of have that discussion. Because I really think that um, you know, so the campground example that you had would have a very hard time meeting five point two one seven use standards to be able to um go through this process. I think that a vacation lodge, um, or even a group camp for the small camping situation is going to have a much better um time trying to get through five point two point six than they are RV parks and campgrounds. Because the condition, so you know, if, if I'm hearing, and maybe I'm not hearing right, but if I'm hearing that, you know, what's, maybe it's potentially appropriate to have some of these parcels as kind of um, you know, low impact um group camps, meaning they're, you know, camping sites. I think that it would be easier to jump over five point two point six than the and, and maybe that's not what I'm hearing. Maybe it's, it's that we want to allow them in there and, and, and the conditions are gonna weed them out to the point of not making it a practical. But that seems kind of counterintuitive. It, you know, if, if there's an argument that maybe um some of these camps could be embraced in this own district, then I would um encourage us to maybe revisit this after we kind of look at the use standards and see if group camps and vacation lodges could, could embrace that a little bit more. If that is the intent, that some of these scenarios might be something that could be supported. And if that's the case, then I think that they might need to live within there versus RV parks and campgrounds. Because that's, I think there's even a threshold of how many acres to even start an RV park and campground. So it's, you know, I think the use that these are referring to um definitely have a very traditional thought in mind and they may not be versatile enough to um, you know, get to where you might want to go um to consider, you know, what, what you're describing. It's just a thought, so.
No, I think that's a good point. I mean, I think obviously we're just looking at the words RV pa- parks and campgrounds and thinking in our head what a campground is. So I think it, our use specific standards are gonna be key to making that choice. And so maybe we'll table these two and at the next meeting we can, or in the interim, maybe you can send out those use specific standards to us and then we can all look at them and see if there's a consensus on thought of that. Does that sound good to everybody?
Yeah, to me it does.
Okay. All right. Well, private resorts and guest ranches. See, and it's funny because like, I feel like that is almost the same if I'm just looking at this and not the use specific standards. That's what's the difference between that and a group camp and vacation lodge. So maybe the use specific standards on those three things would be beneficial.
That would be great because uh private ranches and guests, or private resorts and guest ranches um are designed to be a much larger parcel of ground. Um, with, you know, it says things like, you know, more than a hundred employees. And so it's, it's designed to be completely different. So I think, yeah, looking at these three use specific standards will really kind of help dial in, you know, if, if one um of them makes the greatest sense.
Okay.
I think Heather, we may want to, the first sentence in the fourth paragraph of intent statement um says something that might contradict those choices that we've got there. That it's intended to accommodate personal use by the property and not provide any commercial opportunity. We might want to figure out some sort of an exception statement.
Like an unless.
Yeah, like an unless.
Okay. Um, okay, shooting ranges and amusement parks, I'm guessing everybody's okay with us taking those out. Um. Riding a ki- a academy, roping, rodeo, questionnaire, ski lifts. Um, I assume all of those are good to come out. Um, outfittering guide, I would assume we want to leave that as conditional. That's kind of the perfect area for outfitters to be, even though that is conditional, or I'm sorry, commercial. Um, does anybody have any different thoughts on that? Or does that sound reasonable?
There are already our outfitter operations in this area.
Right.
Some mobile tours and stuff.
Yeah. So I, I think leaving that in there is, it's a conditional use is appropriate.
Okay. Um, it skips us down to bed and breakfasts.
What about alcohol sales?
I'm sorry, what?
What about alcohol sales?
Well, none of those, I'm only doing the ones that are currently allowed in RC or AF.
Well, I, I, I want to open up a liquor store in the back.
Well, you can't, it's blank, it's prohibited. You're cut off.
Oh, yeah, my wife too.
Um, so no B and Bs, I assume everybody's good with that.
Yes.
Um, no animal care boarding or sales indoor or outdoor.
Yes, remove it.
No contractor trade shops indoor operations.
Absolutely not.
How about no outdoor operations, no food services, no farm equipment sales, no flea markets?
Yeah.
Um, we already decided no STRs.
Right.
No gas stations up there?
Yeah.
All right. Um, no lumberyards or sawmills. Um. Don't we have some sawmills possibly in these areas?
Yeah, they're usually have a temporary nature to them.
Right.
But they do exist.
So conditional, I mean, I feel like a sawmill's reasonable. I mean, maybe not a lumberyard, but I can't imagine anybody's gonna try to do a lumberyard up there. But I feel like a sawmill would be reasonable to be conditional or to rim, I should say, remain conditional for these people.
Yeah, maybe that lumberyard and sawmill should read and/or.
I mean, I guess, I feel like they'd be, yeah.
I agree with you on that.
Um. And then I think the same has to be true for these couple of mining activities, right? We gotta leave them conditional.
I agree.
Good.
Um. Same with sand and gravel storage, conditional?
Yeah.
Non-hazardous waste transfer, I don't even know what that is.
That's our um, that are recycling sites.
Oh, okay, so we can take that out.
I think so.
No wholesale sales.
Right.
Large animal ownership, did we come to a place that we were fine with that, leaving that allowed?
Um.
Anybody have opposition to leaving it allowed, I guess?
I'm not opposed to it. I don't think that um it's, I think this animal production, including grazing, dairy and fur farming um kind of is inseparable from large animal ownership. Some of these uses sometimes make me scratch my head.
Well, I think production is, is, you know, breeding and and I don't, I, I think that they're kind of different from one another.
Yeah, I think animal production, like, the, the fact that it says grazing is weird to me. But um, because grazing isn't a production type thing. But dairy, fur farming, um all of that, like, i- i- it is, it, it is and can be um commercial in nature. I think what's gonna be really hard about that is, um, for instance, my parents actually have a big alpaca ranch and so they fur farm, I suppose you could say. Um, and really all it is, is the alpacas live outside and graze and then they come inside. And um, when they get sheared once a year, my parents take that fur to a mill and then it goes away. So it's hard to um, I just want, I, I worry about taking uses away from people. Um, I realize that it's not super conducive to doing that in the areas that we're talking about rezoning. But I guess I'm wondering if having animals graze or having, if they can get the water and they can get the access and they actually want to do it, is the impact of dairy grazing and farming bad? You know, like, I can see somebody who has fifty acres up there that's like, well, I want to keep my cows up here and that's what I'm doing. I guess I don't know. I, I just don't know how we justify taking it away. So that's my question for discussion.
I don't think we can do that either.
Are you proposing keeping them as allowed or conditional?
That's a great question, because we could do that.
I, I guess I would just say, like, it, I, I tend to err on, it doesn't hurt to put it as conditional, just um, you know, the conversations so far have just really been centered around that kind of single unit, single personal private use. And then, you know, maybe anything that kind of deviates from that original intent, you know, we can put towards conditional.
I don't know that I want to make Bill Moyer get a conditional use permit to base on his numerous parcels.
But that's a pre-existing use, correct?
Okay, let, let's say there is one though, and there's, somebody comes along that has three hundred acres, most of which is in the backcountry. And make them get a conditional use permit.
No, I, I agree with you. I agree with you, but I uh, it, it's unfortunate that that has grazing included in the. In the use.
Grazing.
I guess I also, um, I don't disagree with Abby and that making it conditional. The only reason I say that is. Also, this um. The conditional use would help drive home the um. Fact that they have to have water, you know, they have to have the water, the commercial well or the domestic well to. To do any kind of commercial operation like that. I mean, to me, this is insinuating commercial. When it's talking about production, dairy and grazing, it's not personal use. If they have their own dairy cow, I imagine it just goes under large animal ownership and it wouldn't go under this section, correct?
A large animal, so, so alpaca is fur farming?
Yep. Goats, Angora goats, any of those kinds of things. Um, but there's not anything about that that becomes. The biggest impact I see from this line of animal production grazing dairy and fur farming, none of that stuff happens. To where it's super impactful to your neighbors. It's all just that you have a large amount of animals on a piece of property. So. I think that's where I come back to, if they have the acreage and they're allowed to put that many per acre on their property. They're grazing. Like if I have five horses on my lot and they're eating the gra- eating the grass on the ground, they're grazing. So what changes from large animal ownership to that? If I own an alpaca and then I get it sheared once a year because you have to, to maintain them, and then I take that fur and get it. You know, milled, like it's still not happening at the site. Because that would be a commercial, um, totally different than fur farming. A dairy farm. You know, I don't, I just don't know, like if this is insinuating that like. It becomes a commercial dairy farm or it's a commercial fur farming, or is it just that people are doing that with a large animal?
Yeah, in my mind, I wanna separate it between active and passive. Like are your parents, is that their full-time gi- gig where they just. Sit there and feed alpacas so they can sell the fur, or is it kind of a byproduct of owning alpacas? And I mean, I feel like if anyone's doing a commercial dairy, they're not doing it in the woods. They need a building, they need equipment, they need the processing equipment, you know, so. The commercial aspect of that would be evident, apparent, and I mean, you know, impactful.
Well, and my question real quick is if there is animal production, there are certain number of animals. Does that then require them to have stables or some kind of excessive, another dwelling? That then doesn't fall under our main description or allowing other dwellings?
Sure. No, I think that's a good question. I, I, it's fun going through this table because I think we have a lot of things in this table of uses that. We could, you know, at another time go through and say, hey, we should create, cause I almost think. That's a really good example of one that needs a definition and a use specific. Cause I don't think it has its own definition, right, Ann? This is just, yeah, so. It's, it's one that would be nice if we had it and we were saying, hey, this is on a commercial level. I think it's implied myself because I think otherwise you would fall under large animal ownership if you're not doing something commercial with them.
I think it, uh, may perhaps a, a nice um, fix to this is as we're doing this code amendment to add. To the large animal ownership use specific standard, exactly what, you know, I think is. The total consensus is a standard in there that says la- large animal ownership. Um, that includes all of these things um, are allowable. Um, you know, so, so further or so either one thing to either add a standard or. To add a dip, a definition to the large animal ownership that makes um. And great word, Bryce, the passive, um, you know, or uh, all of these items that are associated with ownership. Um, that is non-commercial allowable as part of large animal ownership. So. Actually, maybe even adding, just adding a simple definition to large animal ownership. Um, to be inclusive of all of these activities, um, might. That might kind of solve it and take it a little out of the table and more recognizing that those are all. Um, you know, allowable functions of, of uh, ownership ability.
Yeah, I'm almost curious as to where that. Use came in to play ever to where we were like, oh, we need to add animal production, including grazing. Um, but I mean, if we're, if we're gonna go about it with the idea that we think it's more of a commercial nature. Then I think I would err on the side of Abby's recommendation to make it conditional.
Both of them, large animal ownership and animal production?
No, no, just the animal production. I think large animal ownership, we have to leave.
Gosh, I feel like we just added commercial to the beginning of that, commercial animal production. It would kind of separate them clearly enough that. We could make that conditional and just not worry about it.
Yeah, I think that defining one or the other um, would, you know, would. To either make large animal ownership include all these activities or the other action. To the other use to be specific to commercial, one or the other would, you know, kind of maybe alleviate some of it.
Agreed. Uh, so does everybody feel good about that? Allowed large animal ownership, conditional on any kind of commercial animal production, blah blah.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, commercial greenhouse, I. Guess that would be a conditional use permit too.
I wouldn't mind removing it.
Yeah, I, I would err on the side of.
Yeah, for, I mean, it's. Keeping it in there sort of is a little bit in conflict with the intent of our backcountry zoning.
Right.
Yeah, I agree, kinda harder to comport that one with everything else we're talking about. You know, the ownership of animals is one thing, but. Having a big grow up is. Not.
Yeah.
In line with the intent.
Uh, community farm and garden, same thing. Crop production. I don't even, can you even grow crops in Ludville?
Really used to grow hay, a lot of hay and.
Really? Not very short season. Um. No feedlot, I would assume.
Yeah.
Um, commercial tree farms, firewood sales and storage.
This has surprisingly come up quite a bit in the last couple of years. A lot of people wanting to process firewood.
Well, and if you have forty plus acres, um, and you can go through the ag status with. Um, Forest Service, you have a forest mitigation plan where you have to cut down a certain amount of trees and. Um, then you're selling the firewood from those plots um, of land. So I could see. This area being fairly conducive to that. Um, but I think it would definitely have to be conditional use if it was allowed. Um. Open to suggestions and comments.
Yeah, maybe the bar for the conditional use is that they get that um, forest mitigation plan from the Forest Service.
Yeah.
Well, then that would only let forty acre people cut down firewood, but maybe that's what we want. I don't know. I think the conditional use permit would help us. Decide what's impactful to your neighbors and what's not.
Yeah, I, I think that leaving it is, uh, we're making it a conditional use is appropriate.
We do have section G tree removal written out in the like site plan section of the draft that kinda. I, it's maybe just my own misunderstanding, but it kinda goes against, it's like tree removal shall be given special attention. So I think conditional would. Prevent potential crossover. Unless there's a part that I'm just genuinely not understanding about tree removal and G, section G.
I think section G is, is removal in order to do, use the parcel the way they want.
Okay.
This particular one is, is to um. Use the wood in whatever way they want.
Right, so, so it's a difference in use. So the site plan associated with, with that is to use it for either a backcountry build or a. Um, single family detached. And so this would be actually using the parcel specifically for um. Um, for uh, I, sorry, I was reading Sarah's statement. Um, using it for forestry or for processing of firewood or commercial tree farm. So i- it's a difference in the use. So the site plan is only associated with, with a commercial or with a residential use.
Sorry. I think the other piece to that too, the other importance of that um, for the site plan too, is for the fire mitigation. Component of that structure, so. That's super helpful. And I think that if we make it conditional that. If you wanna remove trees to create that fire mitigation or to take, to build your house and you wanna sell it as firewood, then you've just. That's the conditional use permit to do that. Otherwise, you're using the wood yourself or.
Look at Sarah Mudge's comment.
Um, yeah, so Sarah said engaging wood product commercial industry is looked favorably upon by the state. Um, the state forestry also allows and plans for fuel mitigation, which again is looked upon favorably. Um. But I would think that we wouldn't just want it allowed. We would still wanna be able to conditional it.
Yeah, remember that it still will be allowed in the AF. It just will be conditional in the backcountry.
Correct. Um. Roadside outlet for the sale of agricultural products. I don't think that's gonna be applicable. Um, no helipads up there.
Right.
No bus stops.
Right.
Uh, no radio t- television transmission towers. Um, now I know that you guys may, cause this falls into our utility again. Uh, cause sometimes like the cell phone towers and stuff uh, need these conditional use permits in these kinds of areas. So. Ian and Paul, do you have comment on these, if they should remain conditional?
I think they should remain conditional.
I agree.
Generally, these, we're talking about places that are, that have, have altitude. And um, they need to be able to have long lines of sight.
Where did it go?
We did.
Is that it?
That's it.
That's it. Just a blank page.
Well, it, that's not allowed.
You're not allowed to do anything on this page.
Yeah.
Um, alright, cool. So, um. Do we want to talk more about this code? Did, um, so I think we took care of all these. As well as those. Um, did anybody have any questions on this new revised? Document that we all put together this last time?
I just, um, may I ask if everyone looked at the very last paragraph of um, the intent statement? I did add um, two new sentences that the minimum acreage for the backcountry zone district is a hundred and sixty acres. And that existing industrial mining zoned parcels shall not be eligible for inclusion within the backcountry zone district. Is that, those were the two takeaways I had last time, was that we had landed on a hundred and sixty acres for any potential new area. To want to be rezoned. Um, if they're adjacent, that is um. You know, they can petition to be rezoned, but this would be an area that's non-adjacent. And then to um. Affirm, I think what the consensus was that I am zoned parcels shall not be eligible. To petition um, to join the backcountry zone district. Are those both okay with everyone?
They are for me. I think they're very good points.
And you always still looking at the map to talk about some of those smaller parcel, parcel clusters.
Yeah, actually, that's the next item on the agenda. Um, I think that Bryce said that he had prepared something for everyone to look at. Um, so we can kind of take a look at, at any of them that may not have been included within those. Um, those boundaries that we've kind of mapped out thus far. So yes, I think we're gonna look at those maybe next.
I think that um. That made sense. Anybody have any other questions on this document, which, before we switch over to that?
I just rewatched last week's uh, meeting yesterday and number two. Um, up at the top, I thought you guys in the meeting, you made mention of wanting, wanting to stay short and long-term rentals.
Um.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah. Sorry, super small, but it's only cause I literally just watched it.
No, I'm glad you said that, cause that was important. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Erin. That's great.
Um, okay. Hi, Howard.
I made it.
Made it.
Took nearly all day, but here I am. Good to see everybody.
How, how did Pat's knee surgery go?
Wasn't really good, really good. He said her knee, her knee was just totally gone. And uh, yeah, she's doing good right now. Of course, it's only the first day. But it, the prognosis looks great.
Cool. Good.
Awesome. Alright, so we have the boundary review. Um, Bryce, are you able to? Share?
Yeah, if you don't mind letting me share my screen, actually.
I think it says.
I sent, I sent the link to the same map I'm gonna be looking over with you guys, just so everyone can kind of look at it themselves. If they have any particular area they wanna look at. Um, and then you can also look at it just whenever you want to say, I just to. Get a better idea or let it sit and settle. Um, I made this. Is everyone looking at it now?
Yep.
Okay, so I kinda refined this, um, tried to make everything a little bit more apparent to see. The red stars are existing group camps. So all of these are 10th Mountain Division Associated Huts. And this is Ledville Backcountry Yurts and this is Weston Pass Yurt. The green outline you see right now is um, the existing backcountry zone as it was proposed. Um, and I just wanted to, the, the changes I made were pretty small, so I wanted to kind of leave this up there so you can directly compare. And see what you think. I also left the yellow industrial mining zone up, just so it's a lot more apparent where that plays in. If, when you go to this map, you can look on the layers here. And I have backcountry zoning legacy, which is the one I'm talking about where it's pre-existing. And this is the one I made that was a little revised. Um, you can kind of see as a toggle it on and off, the areas I added. So there's seven total areas. The first area is these two townships up here. This is to cover the home state cluster. Some of these are owned by the federal government, but some of them are owned by private individuals.
How many are there?
Up here, there's only two. And actually, this, I've created a um, a new map. This is actually supposed to be moved over. This is probably. Closer to this area. All of these claims are within Lake County, just to let you know.
But I think there's a couple that are owned by the county and some of them are owned by the feds.
So these ones, no county owned, the count, this one is owned by the county down here. Um, I did exclude parcels that were owned by the county or the federal government. I know the federal government has an interest in. Acquiring these in holdings and never releasing them back to the public domain or private domain. So figured it was pretty safe to just exclude those. So just the home state cluster is the only new cluster I made. Then I included all these, just in the interest of trying to include ev- almost every mining claim. Um, you know, the ones we called recreational mining at one time. So just including some of the more of these in the St. Kevin Temple Gulch area. On the south side, just extending it down to include a few more there.
Are those extensions by um, section or quarter section?
They are by quarter section. Good question, yeah. So I tried to make everything by quarters. They are by quarter section. Good question. Yeah. So I tried to make everything by quarter section, just to keep the legal description simple still, you know, so you might see some areas where it looks like there's too much included, but that's just to keep it on a a quarter section basis.
What's that group camp up there in St. Keven's?
This, this is Uncle Bud's hut.
Yeah.
It is, okay.
Um, this is Sangree's Hut, for those familiar Mount Zion area. This is the only big area where I had a big question for the commission, just to see what you guys thought. But this is just to kind of link those two parcels because there's mining claims that weren't included. Unfortunately, you have to kind of include each township or section here. There's no really good quarter sections here, but this includes a lot of mining claims on the flank, as well as this is White Mountain right here, that I'm pointing to, White Mountain Civil Tours. So.
I just, I'm a little bit leery of putting a backcountry right next to a state or a state highway.
But if you look at those parcels, they're not accessing from there. They're all.
Yeah, thank you. That was my point is that I tried to exclude any parcel that touched a highway. So this, you know, it does look like that, but none of those parcels are highly accessible. You'll see that as well down um, here. So I tried to specifically to gather these mining claims, keep it on quarter section basis, but exclude any that touched the highway and had theoretical highway access. So it's not perfect. You know, that one's not fully included, but this one touches the highway, so I didn't want to include it.
Well, I think it, I think further up highway 82, we did include the highway. There you go.
Yeah.
A gas section of the highway there.
Yeah. And so, you know, just added this to just kind of cover our bases and get that other cluster as well.
Okay.
So feel free to look through that on your own link. It should be the same map. But just to go and get the discussion started. And you can turn it off and on if you want to look at what I added. But that would basically go from, I mean, Paul and I did a great job of including, I would say 98% of all mining claims. This just includes 1% more, and there's still a couple stragglers that couldn't include. And I also wanted to make sure that each section I made was a total of at least 160 acres. Um, just to kind of comply with what we had said, we want the backcountry, each part or each um, zone of the backcountry to be.
So, so you know, all you planning commissioners, this was a group effort by by a previous planning commission. And that Heather was on, Howard was on.
Steve was on. Mm-hmm.
Alright.
Well, thank you, Bryce. I think this is awesome. It looks great. Like I, I, I mean, just without diving into it. Initially, I think it all looks I, I agree with your additions. So thank you so much for putting in that time and effort.
Yeah, I agree with those additions too.
Yeah, I think they, I think they're good. There are some group camps that we've permitted in the last few, you know, I can, like, I can think of Seven Moons Mountain Sanctuary. That's so we can get you um, maybe some that, I, you know, I don't know if that's important to map those, but um, we can.
Well, I already, since I put this layer together, I might as well just, um, I can display it on here too while we're all talking about this, so.
Now, Anne, we had, did we also did, didn't Helen actually produce legal descriptions?
Yeah, I, I've been struggling to find them now. They, I thought I knew where they were, but I haven't been able to to find those. So.
Well, that's something we're going to have to do. Minji also produced a list of property owners, but I was too.
Yeah. Those are going to be, you know, we can, we can work, I need to find both those files because we can, you know, we could work from them, but I think Bryce probably can help identify those, you know, there's, there's going to, those are a couple of years old now, at least a year, over a year old. So we probably have had some de-transfers and such. So we, you know, um, kind of whatever you think, Bryce, I certainly, we were going to um, call on you to kind of help us identify those property owners um, for notification purposes. And, and we do have a compiled spreadsheet um, that Helen and I worked on it on, um, uh, identifying all of them. But, you know, we, there's obviously probably some changes to it. We would hope the bulk would be the same, but not necessarily.
Yeah, I'm more than happy to do that. And I was kind of waiting on once we finalize these boundaries, I can do that. Um, just wanted to wait until we decided if we wanted to keep them or exclude them. But yeah, definitely happy to help out with the owner report.
Great, thank you so much.
What do you think? Should we keep Bryce's additions?
I think the additions look great, but I, if everybody wants to take a few, I mean, I don't know if people want to take some more more time to look them over, um, but they make sense to me.
They do to me too.
I'd have to agree.
Do you have any, sorry, trips?
There is, I think you did a great job, Bryce. Um, thanks for your work. I agree with everybody that it is, is a good way to go.
So now we're happy to help. And yeah, I think this is just going to prevent some stragglers coming in and being, hey, why didn't I get included on this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're going to get those. But we now have 99%.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, next on the agenda, Anne, is for the Forest Service update.
Oh, um, so thank you, Sarah, for making that introduction. And we've been, um, talking, we're supposed to, the next availability pad has is the first part of December. And so, um, have emailed over kind of the draft um, with just a little bit of an explanation. Um, but then I thought it would be easier to have a conversation. So um, Sarah, if you want to join, or Heather, or if anybody wants to, to arrange, um, to have a broader discussion, uh, when that happens, I'm happy to do that. Um, but, um, just wanted to follow up and let you know that Sarah had facilitated that introduction. And, um, so we are, um, setting a time to start having the discussion early in the process about what's happening.
Great.
So I guess I would just invite anybody that has interest to, um, have, to participate in the conversation or, um, you know, for, or maybe just set up a time where we could have a broader discussion, uh, just let me know individually and we'll work on, on, on that. Um, but if, right now, it's just staff kind of filling in the Forest Service of the intent. And, um, seeing if there's any, um, initial concerns or thoughts that we need, staff needs to, to lift up to the planning commission and the board uh, for consideration as we work on the creation of the code. So, um, that's kind of the initial contact. And then if um, it grows into, uh, you know, a bigger discussion, um, I can stay in touch with everyone and anyone that has a desire, maybe an intimate desire to know the Forest Service, uh, engagement on this, um, just let me know.
This will be a Zoom meeting?
Um, right now, it's just a conversation, uh, between me and Pat, but like, that's what I'm saying, I'm offering to open it up a little bit. Um, so I think initially, yeah, um, Sarah, Pat and I are probably going to, um, we can arrange a Zoom, but, um, I, you know, I think maybe in the, in the in the beginning, maybe just kind of an introduction of, of the creation and then maybe a broader conversation down the, down, um, um, down the, down the road. So, um, yes, Kevin, I, um, thank you for your, uh, chat, and I will definitely get you on the email list for, um, uh, further meetings on backcountry. So I, I would just let everyone know that I have started to receive a lot of emails and calls from, um, property owners, uh, Lake County property owners interested on where the work is currently on backcountry and wanting to be involved. And, um, there seems to be quite a bit of desire, um, that for, um, being able to move forward, uh, hopefully in, in that zone district for them. And so um, I'm starting to see a lot of community engagement again. And, um, so I think Kevin received, um, the information today and joined us. So thank you so much for that. And but I, I will let everybody know that we've kind of had, I've had this kind of large working list of, um, interested people, community members. And so as we start having more discussions, I will let them know um, updates and, and ways to join in the discussion. But, um, there definitely is a lot of, um, impacted property owners, very anxious to hear the outcomes of, of this work or, or where it may lead.
Uh, Tim underscore two, are you on that list?
I think you're referring to Tim Birch, and if he's, he's not, I certainly can add him to.
Uh, yes, this is Tim Birch. Um, I'm not on the list, but I would like to be.
Great, Tim. Yep, I've got, um, your contact information through AJ. And so I think actually we, we have it as well. And so definitely I will make sure that we're including the community and updates on, on further discussion.
Great, thank you.
Um, yes, thank you, Sarah, for that question. So, um, she had asked if the community inquiries, um, you know, have brought about any concerns about the creation of the backcountry. And so, so far, um, 100% of the inquiries that, um, staff has received from the community has been, um, a desire to be able to utilize their own parcel, their, the properties, the, and parcels that they own in a manner consistent with what this co-creation would do. And so I haven't, I haven't received any um, concerns, citizens about, um, potential, uh, negative impacts of what this might do. Um, so, so far, the, uh, you know, the outreach has been people wanting to be informed because it aligns with their desires on their own parcels. I mean, I think Bryce might, you know, I think I had um, a, a conversation with Bryce a long time ago, um, because I think maybe he's one of those folks as well.
Yes, I am.
Yeah, I've had a ton of people too. Um, I mean, just obviously over the years as well. And we have been working on this for years. So I've had people, um, come in and check in and say, hey, how's, is that ever going to happen? And I'm really excited to see that maybe it finally is happening, um, this time. But yeah, I think, um, I too have not had anybody with any kind of negative concern or, um, anything like that. I think, I think most of it has been, um, to be able to utilize that. And I've had some, some people who don't necessarily have properties in the backcountry, the proposed backcountry zone. Um, but that are excited to see that, um, potential use because it will, it will direct people to use these kinds of uses in that area rather than trying to get away with doing it like Canarc or in some of these subdivisions where it's not, um, a reasonable location. So, yeah, I think overall, everybody that I've talked to has been very, very positive, um, about the change as well. So I think that's great news. And I guess that leads into our next item on the agenda of the note, the FAQ notifications and such.
Yeah, I think that's really important. And, um, so what I would propose is that when we send out these notifications, so anytime we notice a file, um, and we send out normally all that we send out um, to an affected property owner that is within the notification area, so maybe not an effective, but a note, within the notification area is simply the notice of filing. So, um, all that is, is the form that outlines, um, when the public hearing is, what it's about, what the zone district is, and, um, direction on how to obtain further information. So usually it's a contact for staff. So that's, that's what the typical notification that goes out is. In this case, I think, um, because we are, and, and to, um, you know, kind of Sarah's concern, we are introducing a, a new zone district. So immediately when we notify, um, people, they're going to wonder how does that affect me? And I think going through the table of uses tonight was really important. Um, because, you know, immediately people want to be, I think the biggest concern is what am I losing? Um, so what have I thought that I could do? I think Paul's point to the Moyers is, is a perfect example. Hey, this has been ag forestry land, uh, since zoning, uh, the adoption of zoning. And now what are you potentially proposing to take away from me? So I really think, um, that it's very beneficial to have a good FAQ when we send out that notification, also something that's readily available on our website. Um, and is very robust, um, so that, uh, whomever is looking for information can get it quickly. You know, typically, um, you know, there's a point person in our office that takes, uh, those inquiries. And even if it's both Paul and I, you know, if we have hundreds of hundreds of people that we're notifying, um, you know, they're going to, there's going to be a certain level of frustration. Um, when they want to reach out and figure out what's going on when these notices go out. So I just really think it's very essential for us to um, give people as much information and, um, explain this, uh, within the, the mailing that goes out as well as having a great resource online. Um, so that they can find easy, quick answers because our, our time is already, um, very compromised. And, and so I hate to think of somebody leaving a message and having to wait 24 hours for us to explain to them what might be happening with their property. So um, just my thought on that.
I totally agree. I think that the intent is not to overwhelm you guys with answering a bunch of questions. And I think, um, you know, one idea could be that we, you know, put together a similar use table that only applies to what's no longer going to be allowed and what is going to be allowed. Um, you know, that's an idea so that it's just super clear and we can have notes on that that explain it. Um, but yeah, I think more information is better than less, um, so that we're able to answer as many questions as possible. Um, but I'd like it to be, I mean, obviously, the whole code document is hard to read and confusing to, to people who aren't, you know, looking at that every day. So I'd like to make it as easy, user-friendly as possible, um, but yet still have all the information that we need in there. So, um, I'd be happy to help. You know, be in on that creation with you. And if there's anybody else, we could just have a separate little creation meeting of that FAQ document and then present that to this, to the planning commission at the next meeting.
I'm happy to help if it, if it works with, um, my schedule next week.
Awesome.
Let's take everybody up on that.
Yeah, um, yeah, anybody, you know, two or three of us, um, or two or three of you with staff, um, you know, or, you know, that would be great so that we could really, and you know, it's always good to, to have us all working together because you'll think of something staff doesn't think of. And, um, so yeah, that'd be great. I can, anybody that's interested, email me and I will set something up for next week. And, um, you know, probably do it during, do it via Zoom. That just seems to be a really great way to be able to talk about it and put together the, the list. And then I would love to, if anyone is really great at, um, visual, uh, presentation, or you need some kind of document, um, that, that I think that, you know, uh, something that's not real overly wordy and, and it's got good graphics on it and gives good direct information. So anybody that has, um, talent in designing something like that, um, please join our group and help with that because I would love if someone feels as though they would have time, um, and energy of, once we take the information, putting it into a great format. Um, I, you know, just can't probably, I definitely need to communicate that, um, Paul and I are a little underwater. And so um, it would be great if somebody that has that talent would join the group, um, let me know. And, and, uh, we can put all the information together. And then if somebody has that, um, part to add, that would be fantastic.
I'm, I'm happy to add that part, um, of course, unless someone's more qualified, but I, that's, that's my background. So I'm not a freehand illustrator by any means, but I can definitely create graphics.
Yay, that'd be awesome.
That'd be fantastic.
One of the things that I One of the things that I didn't think of is that this is liable to cost seven or eight hundred dollars worth of mailing. I'm not sure I've got that in the budget. So I might have to look at that.
Yeah, well, let's, let's talk, I think actually we could talk to Patty or the postmaster about a bulk rate when we have to do something like this, so maybe we can figure out those logistics offline, and, but very good point for us to consider, Paul, so we, you and I can chat about it, and then maybe we can figure out if there's a way to have a cost savings.
Very encouraging about that. Thank you, Sarah. But that's what it's gonna cost, when you, when you figure what, fifty cents per letter now, or is it a little bit more than that? Does anybody know? When was the last time you wrote a letter?
Isn't it fifty-three?
I think, I think it is. I think it is fifty-three cents. So you figure a, a little bit more than a dollar for two letters, and I think that there's liable to be a thousand to fourteen-hundred people, or that we're gonna be sending letters to. I think we're looking at seven or eight hundred dollars.
Yeah, we definitely, I do think there might be a bulk rate opportunity, but let me, like, we can explore that and see, and thank you so much, Commissioner Mudge, so maybe we can first see if we can find some way to have a, a good cost savings, and.
And are the letters just intended to the people who are affected, or is it everyone in, in the city?
Twenty-five hundred feet outside of your property line, which is going to go twenty-five hundred feet outside of each zone district, of each, of each zone district boundary. So that's gonna be more than just the people that are directly affected.
Okay, yeah, if you guys can look at that, and it sounds like Commissioner Mudge is on it to help figure something out, so that would be fun. So yeah, anybody interested in helping with that, and we'll, we can try to keep the weight of that letter down, so that if one posted stamp works, would be great too. So we'll figure out how to compile all that information into as small of a piece as we can. The next is just walking us through this, the application process, Anne, and what we've got moving forward.
Um, it sounds great, so, as soon as, I think we're pretty close to a draft copy, and I think it's, so I think our two action steps are the FAQ, having that ready, being ready to launch this zone district, as well as the code language. So one is to fine tune the things that we brought out tonight in the use table, and looking specifically at those three uses that, you know, we want to kind of fine tune the group camps, vacation lodges, RV, and campgrounds, and guest ranches and resorts. So really kind of fine tuning those areas. I think other than that, I think we're very close. So I think that's our outstanding item there, and then it, we need to fine tune the message, and it being able to explain and define what we're doing to the community. So that aspect, as well as identifying our notification. So thank you to Bryce. You know, he's gonna be really helpful and critical in helping us identify that notification, so thank you to that. Then the small group working on the messaging, and then I think that we're at a consensus point on the code, other than those items about, I think there were a couple ag items, I think that maybe we could clean up to, in the use table, as well as those three uses that we kind of need to review, and so I'll send out the specific standards on those. Once we get all three of those ready to go, once we have the message together, once we have the code draft solid, and we've identified our notification, I would suggest that we are ready then to initiate the application. So the application will be, you know, just like any other applicant, staff will fill out the application, put together the file, and submit it for public review. So it'll be online, it will be distributed to anyone that has questions. So it's preparing the application. Then from there, we will notify and print the notice in the newspaper for thirty days prior, so at that point, we'll be ready to set our public hearing, and really work towards messaging out to the community what we're doing, so the presence on the website will be important, as well as referring the application to any affected stakeholders. So then that will also, I should back up, part of the pre-launch of the application will also be those critical conversations with the Forest Service and any other stakeholders that we identify in the referral process. So early reach out to those, I think, is also very important. You know, once we have the application, we will refer it to them, but I think preliminary discussions and being proactive would be essential. So staff will review those notification agencies, and see if there's anybody that we can also have early conversations with. Also, we will be submitting the, the code language to legal, to make sure that there isn't anything that we've put in there that isn't legal, or has some unintended consequences with it. We can actually do that within, well, it kind of depends on our attorney's availability. So staff will check with them this week too, to see if they have early availability in December, because I think we're at a point that they can already look at what we have, even if we're fine tuning the uses. So those are kind of all the preliminary steps. Once we set the public hearing, we'll be ready to, you know, we should be well on our way, so we have some preliminary steps before we'll be able to launch with our hearing date, and then from there, we'll send out the notices at the same time we publish in the newspaper. Typically, we don't have to do that quite as soon, but I think early notification on all of this is really key. Even if we give ourselves an extra couple of weeks for notification, that might be prudent too. So I'd love to hear what Paul thinks about that, and, and maybe what everyone thinks. Code only requires us, the longest notification time is thirty days, but I don't see anything wrong with getting our notices out, once we have our message to any affected parties and the adjacent forty-five days before the public hearing. I, I don't, I think being generous with time is really, you know, something that the community deserves from us, and adding some transparency to this. So typically, we're kind of at the mercy of an applicant that wants things to go quickly, and I think with us as the applicant, taking some time is in the best interest of everyone to make sure that we do it right. So, any questions about any of that? Sorry, it was pretty long-winded.
I, I really think that legal review is part of those three steps.
Oh, absolutely.
Because you know what's gonna happen when we start talking about this with Erin. She's gonna find numerous things that we have to tweak. And then when we get done tweaking those, I think we have to bring it back to the Planning Commission, and, and in, in another work session, because I'm anticipating a lot of, a lot of tweaks.
Yep, absolutely. I think that we, you know, we get it into Erin, and, you know, I, I'm not sure that we'll have a lot of work session on it, because, you know, sometimes those things are kind of finite in what we can and can't do, but, but maybe, maybe there will still be wiggle room in something, or potential to remove, or, or, or do it different. So, you know, there may be some, some adjustments that we'll still have some latitude with. But absolutely, and we're also, you know, at the mercy of, of her availability, which is sometimes a little tedious.
Well, it's sometimes pretty hard to do, is to get her to be, to be able to put in the, the time that's gonna be required here. But I really think that any tweaks that we make as a result of legal review have to be brought to the Planning Commission in a work session.
Sure, I totally agree with you. I totally agree. I'm just saying that sometimes, you know, those legal changes just are, are just a have-to kind of thing, so.
Anybody have any questions on that process?
I mean, I, I think just given the scope of the change, if, if you do forty-five days versus thirty, that's only a service.
And maybe even more generous, you know, I, I think that if we get this done in the first quarter of next year, I think it'll be a total six, I, you know, I think that would seem like a huge success. You know, I, I, I don't think that there's any need, once we get what we feel is our final draft, to rush, to rush that draft, you know, to really vet it and make sure that we've, you know, done something that, that we can support within the community and into, into the board, so.
Yeah, this is a big change, but I think you're right, Anne. I think that by, within the next quarter, the first quarter, I think is something that we should.
Yeah, I will, you know, staff will, and I will give you, I'll reach out and give everybody updates, you know, when the Forest Service meeting happens, and if we'll have a follow-up with a broader discussion, let you know when Paul and I are meeting with legal. You know, we'll keep you all abreast of what's happening, so you kind of know, you know, where we are in the process, and, you know, kind of a heads up. Hopefully, our next meeting is in two weeks. You know, at least if nothing else, we'll have dates that we're meeting to, to have discussions, or, you know, maybe we'll have more than that. We'll just have to kind of wait and see, since we're reliant on, you know, other individuals' schedules and availability.
Okay.
Thank you, Anne. Anybody else have any other questions before we close up for the evening? Awesome. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Hi. All right, thank you, everybody, and remember, if you're interested in helping with, helping Anne, just send her an email. All right, thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you.